Yeah.
Okay, hi, everyone. So we are going to get started with the session. I'm Natasha Lowe, the administrative coordinator for Life Science Education at Graduate in Life Science Education. Welcome. So this is the special session for domestic and international students concerning course-based and professional master's programs. Just some housekeeping rules. This session will be recorded and if you can keep yourself muted and your cameras off during the session. And if you have any specific questions for the speakers, you can put it in the comment box and they will try to address your questions during the session. And as well, we'll have about 25 minutes after the session for them to answer your questions. So I'm going to start with the first speaker, Dr. Alan Kaplan. He is the vice dean of graduate and academic professors at Graduate and Life Sciences Education. And he'll be having the opening remarks for the session. So without further ado, Dr. Alan Kaplan can share your screen.
People see that?
Yes.
Okay, so welcome, everybody, and thanks for participating. I'm just going to be brief, provide you with a very high-level overview with a specific focus on our course-based and professional master's programs. That's what this session is directed at. So I, you know, a bit of a bit of an important part of U of T experience is that we are a highly globally ranked lead institution. So you can see on all of the various ranking systems, we're number one in Canada. And in the, all of the international rankings, this is overall rankings, we're in the top 25. And internationally, those numbers go up when we narrow it down to specific graduate training, especially life science training in many areas of life science. U of T is in the top 10 and even in the top 5. So rest assured, you'll be getting a world-class education if you come here. So you can see here, reflection of what I've said. For biological sciences, life sciences, the QS World University rankings were number 13 in the world. And for clinical medicine, according to US News and World Report, we're number four, biochem is 11, molecular biology genetics 11, and farm tox is 17. So very highly ranked, and that's a reflection of the quality of students as much as it is the reflection of the quality of the programs and faculty. We're large. And I will argue that large is good in this context. So you can see that overall, we have 93,000 students. And if we focus specifically on graduates, so 19,000 of those 93 are graduate students. And there, there are three, three campuses, the main graduate campus is downtown St. George, but there are some graduate students in both Scarborough and Mississauga. And if we look at the breakdown domestic versus international, we have 16,000 domestic students in the graduate programs and 4,000 domestic, international students in our graduate programs. These are the degrees that they're pursuing. And if we look at just the course-based and professional masters, we have close to 900 students in our professional master's programs. You'll hear a lot more about each of these during the course of this symposium or webinar. And we have about 50 students in our course-based master's programs. Most of the 772 are in research based programs, but we're increasing the number in our course base. We have two course-based programs. This is the most important overview slide. So it shows you each of our departments, biochemistry, immunology, institute medical science, lab medicine, pathobiology, medical biophysics, molecular genetics, nutritional science, occupational therapy, pharmacology, toxicology, physical therapy, physiology, we have science and speech-language pathology. So those are all of our department, graduate departments. You can see the degrees that they confer on their students. And specifically looking at course-based programs. So we have a course-based program out of the Department of Immunology and Applied Immunology. We have one in the molecular genetics program and genetic counseling. And we have another applied clinical pharmacology program in pharmacology and toxicology. And then an increasing number of professional master's programs, biomedical communication, lab medicine, which just started, translational research, they're both based in lab medicine, pathobiology, medical genomics, occupational therapy, physical therapy, medical physiology, and speech-language pathology. You're going to hear about each of these in a subsequent speak by, in information given to you by subsequent speakers. So these are the tuition rates. Course-based masters, students pay the same as research-based, and for domestic students, that's $6,200 per, per year. It's much higher for international students. And you can see the tuition for professional programs is slightly higher than the course-based programs. And you can see in the, in the rehabilitation sector, also slightly higher. Biomedical communication is a unique program. It's a professional program and the tuition there is about $1,000 more again. Except for PhD training, international students pay a significantly higher tuition. And if you want to know how to apply, go to the departments in which these course-based and professional master's programs are offered and you'll get information on their website as to how to apply. Each one has some different timelines and different requirements. And some departments even admit in January and May. So this is the SGS website, School of Graduate Studies. And they are the administrative entity that administers applications for all of the graduate programs, including course-based and professional masters. When you're ready to apply, that's where you would submit your application. So this is just the city downtown of Toronto to point out that we're at the center of the action, the starred and buildings are all involved in graduate training. This is the Medical Science Building across from Queen's Park. So you'll be training right in the center of the city, adjacent to a number of our hospitals and other research institutes. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have in the chat box before passing it on to my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Alan Kaplan. So if we have the next presenter, Rory McEwen from School of Graduate Studies, if you can share your screen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rory McEwen, and I have worn a number of different hats at the School of Graduate Studies. The School of Graduate Studies, as Professor Kaplan said, is the entity. It's a better word than anything else I've ever used. For administering graduate programs at the University of Toronto, we work with all 87 graduate units, as they're called. And I'm here to be sort of, and I'm going to put a bit of tension on every other speaker by encouraging you to ask the hard questions and suggesting the answers to those questions may come from today's speakers or may come from somewhere else. So this has been indicated, there are a number of different types of program that are available at the graduate level at U of T. And we're here today strictly to talk about professional master's programs or course-based master's programs. We're not going to be talking today about research-based or thesis-based programs at the master's level or the PhD level. And so there are important questions you have to ask yourself before you embark on the time, effort, and money of a graduate degree. Graduate degrees are not easy to earn. They shouldn't be easy to earn. There are highly advanced programs to train you for very specific endeavors. And so finding the right program can be a bit bewildering. We have, as I said, around 87 graduate units offering programs. I lose track. We have 300 graduate degree programs, thereabouts. Again, I lose track at the University of Toronto. And what I'm going to say that will challenge the other speakers today is that it's not always the people delivering the program who are the best to advise you on what program is right for you. First and foremost, you're the, going to be the best person to advise on what programs right for you, but there are other sources of information as well. The School of Graduate Studies website provides a comprehensive listing of all programs at U of T, but it's only one place to start because admission requirements, program requirements, and so on vary so much from program to program. You always want to go back to the website of the graduate unit offering the program that you're considering. But you also want to get outside information. For a professional program, think about where do you want to be in five years' time? And try to find someone who is where you want to be. Better yet, find their boss and find out why they hired the people that they're hiring. You can do this through the Career Center, through alumni of your program, through all sorts of programs offered, through Career Exploration at U of T. But other questions you should be asking are, do you really need this degree in order to do what you want to do? Can you afford to do this degree? And are you qualified? Also want to take a look at some programs that we won't be talking about in great detail today because they're not degree programs. These are called collaborative specializations. And these are a way for graduate students to break down the barriers between different research fields. So I'll just give you a really quick example before jumping into the rest. Students often ask me if they can apply to a Master of Science in Neuroscience, and I have to say, no, we don't have a program in Neuroscience. But U of T has a ton of excellent neuroscientists. They're just located in the Institute of Medical Science, in the Department of Physiology. Some of them are in the Department of Psychology, in the Faculty of Arts and Science. And so collaborative specializations are a way for a student to register in a degree program while also taking specialization training on the side and in their own course electives and graduating with both the degree and a certification in the collaborative specialization. So do check that out. What do you need to get into a graduate degree program at U of T? This slide is very carefully color-coded. So anything in blue is a requirement that is set by the School of Graduate Studies and holds campus-wide. Anything in red is something that's determined by the graduate unit offering the program you're interested in. So if you want to do a master's, you have to have a bachelor's degree from a recognized university. Fortunately, you're all at U of T, so there's no doubt your degree is recognized. You have to have a mid-B average in your final year, so your last five completed full-year courses or 10 half-year courses. But especially in faculty of medicine programs, there are higher expectations. So they may be looking for your marks over the last two years. They may require a B+ or an A-, instead of a B. They may want an appropriate average in selected courses that match up with your program. So you're always going to want to check back with the website of the graduate unit offering the program you're interested in. The question of whether a degree is appropriate training for your selected graduate program is in red. It's in red for a reason. SGS, I'm not a biochemist. I'm not going to tell you what makes a good biochemist and then tell the Department of Biochemistry who they should be admitting. That's their choice. That's what they look at. So if you're concerned that you don't have the right courses as prerequisites for a graduate program, always check with the graduate unit offering the program you're interested in. It's also important to remember, as Professor Kaplan indicated, U of T is pretty high-powered. So we've got amazing students from U of T and from all over the world applying for our programs. So meeting the minimum admission requirements does not guarantee admission. It's highly competitive. You're going to be judged against the other applicants in the pool with you. And there's really no way of predicting what that pool is going to look like from year to year. So it's often very hard for departments to say, yeah, you've got an 82 average, you're fine, you're in. Some years that might be great, some years you might be in an applicant pool with all sorts of really brilliant and outstanding students. So the other question you're going to have to ask yourself is how to fund your graduate education. Usually at U of T, departments focus their funding on research stream students, so the research MScs and PhDs. You're going to want to look into sources of external funding, whether from the provincial or federal government. Some programs are eligible, some programs are not. Many of our students are funding their graduate programs through provincial student loans. And I want to encourage you to at least consider taking a year, maybe two, off to decompress from undergrad, especially if you're finishing undergrad under the extra stress of the coronavirus pandemic. Build up some income, get some savings, develop really strong work habits, because we do find some that students who have really strong work ethics make it through the programs much faster, more efficiently, and with a happier experience. But I'll also warn you that if you want to take time off, you do need references to get into these programs. So if you're going to take time off, make sure you nail down your references before you apply. How do you apply? Well, the application is online. For most programs we're discussing today, it's through the School of Graduate Studies website. Some people think it's out of date and rickety. I like to think of it as a charming antique. But you're going to want to give yourself extra time to work with it because it has its little finicky glitches. If you're applying to do the Master of Science in Speech Language, in, sorry, Master of Science in Occupational Therapy, Physical Therapy, or Speech-Language Pathology, you'll be applying through a province-wide application portal called ORPUS, about which I know very little, so listen carefully when those programs talk. The most important thing for a good application is that you've done your background research, you know the program, you know how you'll fit into it, and time. You need time to write a good application, and your referees do too. They're going to be asked for any number of references from any number of students or any number of programs with deadlines right around the same time. So if you don't give your referees plenty of advance notice and plenty of time to submit their, their references for you, you're going to get a weak reference, and it could impact your, how your application's assessed. So give yourself plenty of time to prepare a good application. Really know the program inside out and backwards so that you can write an application that speaks to that program, not just about yourself, but about how you fit with the program. Remember that if you're applying for external scholarships, the funding deadlines will often come before the program application deadlines. So make sure you don't miss out on any chances for funding through bad planning. And for referees, treat your referees with courtesy. They are professionals, but they're human beings. They need time, they want to be appreciated, and if they're prepared to write a reference for you, they're probably interested in the outcome. So keep the lines of communication open with your referees. In terms of choosing them, you're going to want to balance out a few different things. A senior faculty member probably carries a bit more weight than a junior faculty member because they've taught more to students. They can actually talk about how you compare to the students over the course of their careers. How well do they know you? U of T is a big school, some of our classes are really large, so that prof who taught you in a 350, sorry, phone call. So a prof who taught you an electric course of 350 won't know you as well as someone who taught you in a smaller class. And also, how well did you do in their class? Did they really see you at their best, and can they speak to your strengths as a student? So it was super quick because we were trying to cover off all programs all at once. Just remember, do your research, make sure you understand the program and what's involved. Talk with people outside the university who are doing what you want to do and see how they got to where they are. And give yourself lots and lots of time to prepare a good application. Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. So if we have Karosh Keanazad from Applied Immunology, to share your screen.
No problem. All right. First of all, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to attend our presentations today. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving weekend and everyone is keeping safe and well. I am the, my name is Karosh. I'm the manager of the Applied Immunology Program. And over the next couple of slides, I'm hoping to give you guys an overview of what our program is, what makes it special, and some of the key information about it. So basically, what our program is, is it's very similar to our fundamental thesis-based master's program and PhD program, wherein you are going to be working in a lab and you're going to do novel research in, in that lab. The main difference is, is instead of waiting till the very end to generate a giant thesis of your work, you're, you don't do that in this program. Instead, you generate three reports and give three presentations throughout your studies. One of the other benefits of our program is that you've got a very diverse course selection that you can pick from. So while you're doing your lab work, and if you're interested in physiology, or if you're interested in data analysis, or if you're interested in biochemistry or pharmacology, you can take courses in those fields as well, and they will count towards your degree requirements. Another big benefit of our program is that it's fixed length. You know exactly when you start and you know exactly when you're going to end. So students who are external to our department, usually, and external to U of T, finish the program in two years, start to finish. If you are a Department of Immunology undergraduate student and have met certain prerequisites, such as having completed our fourth-year thesis program and some courses in our department, you can actually gain advanced standing to our program and finish our, finish the master's degree in about 1.3 years or four terms. Now, one of the main questions that I get asked is, what, well, what can I do with a Applied Immunology degree? Well, you can do pretty much anything you can think of. The program has been running for about five years now. We've had close to 30 or 40 alumni from our department, and they've gone on to a whole host of different jobs and different, different sectors. Many of our students actually continue on, continue on to do their PhD studies in the program. So they finished their masters and they continue on to the PhD. We're getting more and more of those as, as the years go by. Some of our students have ended up as, as journalists, some are working at banks. Many are working at an R&amp;D firm up in Markham Fluidigm, which designs and develops analytical instruments. One student was actually founder of a startup several years ago. Analysts are another avenue that our students end up in, and medical school and other professional schools. One student currently is in, is in law school, actually. So as you can tell, there's a whole host of careers that are available to you after the Applied Immunology MSC. Now, some key deadlines and information for you. This year, we've instituted a fee deadline where, in order to submit your application for the standard entry program, your fees should be, your application fee should be paid by January 1st, 2021. And the application deadline is January 15th, 2021, and this is for a standard entry for September 2021. For students who are interested in advanced standing, the fee deadline is going to be February 15th, 2021, with an application deadline of March 1st, 2021. And as I mentioned, the advanced standing students start a bit earlier, and they start their program at the beginning of May, immediately after the undergraduate calendar ends. So just in summary, our program is, is a great one for you if you're interested in immunology. And given the, the world today, the topic of the immune system and how it functions and how it works is becoming more and more prevalent. So if you're interested in doing a little bit more in-depth knowledge into the immune system, we're, we're happy to, happy to help in that regard. If you have any questions, or if you have any, any information that you need, don't hesitate to reach me at applied immunology@utrona.ca and our website, immunology.utrona.ca will have all of the application information, all of the links you need, and all of the prerequisites that are available. Thank you very much for, for your attention. If you like this video, click like and subscribe. Oh, wait, sorry, that's the wrong, wrong platform. I apologize. So I will turn it over to Natasha.
Perfect. Thank you, Karosh. And so we're on to the next speaker. If Dr. Avram Gottlieb can share your screen from Laboratory Medicine and Pathology.
And so is Brandon there?
Yes, Brandon, if you can share the screen.
Yeah, I'm sharing the screen. Just give me one second. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you very much for attending this session. As you already heard, this is a relatively new program. We're working with our first cohort of students this year. And it's very competitive in terms of admission to the program because we have 10 spots. And as you'll see, there are two fields in the program, and there are only five students in each of the fields. So the most important thing for you to understand about is to understand what the career is that we're training people for. So the first of this pathologist assistants, and these are individuals who will be working in hospitals, but also in related laboratories, most of the time clinical, some can be research. And they contribute to diagnostic services and anatomical pathology through application of knowledge of human laboratory specimen analysis. So this is a very important position. And without pathologist assistants, the pathologist could not function in terms of developing a diagnosis. And pathologist assistant is the first to see the tissue and to begin to handle it. So their training is quite intense, and it involves both actual courses in basic biomedicine, but also a lot of practical experience within the lab settings. The clinical embryologist, again, five individuals are very important in terms of the infertility field, and they contribute to clinical management via application of assisted reproductive technology in clinical embryology labs. So again, different, but there is overlap, and there's also some overlap in the training. And each of these fields, in terms of training, enrich the others. Okay? So the goal is, as we said, to train pathologist assistant and clinical embryology. And the training program provides opportunities to learn and understand the scientific and the societal underpinnings of the respective fields and to be clinically competent and be prepared for lifelong learning. So clinical competency is a very important feature. Because at the end of the day, once you go out, you'll be expected to perform in really a very important healthcare position. Next. So the objectives, just to go over them quickly, is to understand the scientific and basic research, which provides the foundation of the professional practice of a pathologist assistant or a clinical embryologist. The, you'll be achieving academic and applied skills to work effectively in the discipline. You will have the ability to become an important problem solver, a critical scholar, an innovator, a leader, and a moral and ethical practitioner. And many of the courses are directed very specifically to these characteristics. And we also provide the graduates with tools to be critical self-learners and embrace the changes in the field because these are rapidly expanding and dynamic fields. So it becomes very important to have the critical skills and tool. And the, as we're all moving in the healthcare area to precision medicine and to patient-centered healthcare. And we're also very, because it's a small program, large faculty, we're giving an important valuable student experience within the program. Okay? So just to give you some idea of the courses, it's course-based. Essentially, all these courses, except for two, are new courses, which we've developed specifically for the program. So they're really tailored courses. And as you can see, you're starting off with core courses, which everybody takes, cell and molecular biology, research methods, clinical laboratory management, use biomedical ethics, which is an important course and very unique to our particular program. Stats and capstone project as well. Next. And then for the ones in clinical embryology, you could see there's a whole horse, host of courses in which you learn as you advance. So your knowledge increases and you're building from one course to the next until eventually, as you see towards the end, you're going into the actual clinical embryology labs. We've created a simulation lab, especially on the sixth floor of the MSB. And eventually, you'll have an opportunity to look at clinical infertility labs as well. Next. And then the PA you can see again, basic principles of human disease, pathobiology, pathophysiology. And then you go into practicums, which are hands-on courses in surgical pathology, in autopsy pathology, forensic pathology. You go up to the forensic unit and spend You go up to the forensic unit and spend time there. And you're also learning about biothinking and again, more surgical pathology. So as you can see, the, the main tactic is surgical pathology, because it's such a huge part of this particular P A career, but also a thorough grounding in autopsy and forensic pathology. Next. So why Masters of Health Science in Laboratory Medicine? Well, we're interested, what, what we hope is that we're going to expose you to the very best, certainly across Canada, but internationally as well. There's no program like this anywhere in the world. There's no CE program in Canada at all, so this would be unique for Canada. And very few actually internationally. P A programs, there's two small ones in Canada, and there are about ten or so in the U S. So this is a field that's developing rapidly. And the qualifications that you're going to have from this program will clearly lead you directly to jobs in hospitals, clinics, and industry and academia as well. Next. So if you need further information, I certainly encourage you to get that. Brandon Wells, who's here with me today, is our graduate and life sciences education officer, has a wealth of knowledge on graduate education specifically and on our program as well, and can give you important direction. And as you already heard, it's very important for you to have as much information as possible about the fields that you're interested in, and to speak to as many people as possible who are in the field already, who are educators in the field, who are graduate educators, and get information that will help you to select. And I think, as was said, the most important thing is that does this program and this career fit your own goals and interests? I'll stop here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gottlieb. So I'm going to go on to the next presenter, Dr. Erin Stiles from Medical Genomics. If you can share your screen. Thank you.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, so as Natasha mentioned, I'm Dr. Erin Stiles. I'm the Director of the Medical Genomics Program at U of T, or as we fondly refer to it internally, the MedGen Program. And so before we jump right into talking about why you should seriously consider doing a master's in medical genomics, I'd like to talk about the field of medical genomics for a quick second. So this is really a growth area, especially now, especially in the context of a global pandemic that relies on using genomic information about an individual to help inform decisions about their clinical care. And as research in the field outpaces clinical care, we are seeing a widening gap between cutting-edge science that's being done in labs and current clinical practices. And with that, we're also seeing this emerging need for professionals who are able to generate, integrate, and interpret genetic and genomic data. So the MedGen Program is the first of its kind in Canada, and really, there are actually very few programs like this anywhere else in the world. And one of the things that makes us really unique is that we're a dual-stream program. So we accept highly capable students into either a clinical stream or a laboratory professional stream. And so in general, what that means is to apply to our clinical stream, we ask for clinicians. So we ask for a FARM D or an equivalent degree in pharmacology or toxicology, a PD P accredited BSc in food and nutrition, a nurse practitioner grad program, at least one year of an undergrad medical degree while remaining in good standing with your program, or having completed a recognized M D program. And then to apply to our laboratory stream, we're looking for our applicants to have completed a four-year BSc in a relevant discipline. So I've listed a few here that I know are a good fit, but this is by no means an exhaustive list. So if you have questions about whether or not you're a good fit for this program, feel free to reach out. And in general, these two student streams move through our program as a single cohort. They take almost all of the same classes. They engage in most of the same activities. The program itself consists of a core set of lecture discussion and project-based courses across a two-year or five-term program duration. There's a lot more information about all of our core courses up on our program website, which I'll post on my last slide. But in a general sense, students only take two classes at a time. And the first year is dedicated primarily to core competencies in areas like advanced human genetics, biostats, and methods. While the second year, we focus in on more big-picture, application-based courses. So talking about communicating genetics information, the ethical and legal implications of genetic information in the clinic. And this culminates in a hands-on, stream-specific capstone practicum. So this is really one of the only meaningful times during the program when the clinical and laboratory stream students will diverge, and they'll engage in stream-specific capstone projects at this point. So what would you do if you got this degree? As a professional program, one of our big goals is to prepare our grads with skills for immediate practical implementation. And so our graduates so far have found themselves to be suited for a really wide variety of professional roles. Our lab stream grads have been really well-suited for work in clinical diagnostics and research science labs, really implementing the tools of genomic medicine as variant analysts, expert curators, and genome analysts. They've been attractive to publicly funded enterprises and private companies, both in bioinformatics and in biotech sectors. And because of our program's focus on communications, they've also been really well-suited to a variety of psych com roles. Our clinical stream grads, on the other hand, are expected to complete the program and then go back to finish their clinical training if they're not done yet, or return to their existing clinical practice in a new capacity. But in both streams, the idea here is that this degree is going to allow our grads to address an observed need in the field of medical genomics, will enhance existing professional practice, and will enable new kinds of career paths. So should you do it? So I just told you about a few of their career paths that our alumni have found themselves on after completing this program. But we also know that this field is changing really, really rapidly right now, and new kinds of jobs are cropping up all the time. So if you want to spend a couple of years doing something that's going to put you right at the vanguard of a very exciting field, which really is right at the intersection of genetic and genomic research, clinical practice, informatics and data analysis, bioethics, and new biomedical technology, you should consider doing a master's degree in medical genomics. So I'm going to end here by saying that we're now accepting graduate applications for a September twenty twenty one start date. We have two application deadlines, one's in January and another is in May. If you want to learn more about the MedGen Program, you can feel free to reach out to me directly or to our general emails account. Both are on the screen there. You can check out our program website at www.moleculargenetics.utron.ca slash medical genomics. I would also encourage you to stop by our student blog at www.uoftmedicalgenomics.blog home. And if you want the opportunity to chat with some current students and really get the lowdown on what we're all about, I would encourage you to register for and attend our program info session and student panel, which is going to be on November sixth. And you can find information about how to register for that session on our program website. So that's all for me, and I hope to see many of you guys again.
Thank you, Erin. If we can have Dr. Helen Miliotis from Medical Physiology to share your screen. That'd be great.
Hi, everyone. My name is Helen Miliotis, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Master of Health Science in Medical Physiology. This is a brand-new program. We started in September with our first cohort of fifteen students. Why, why is there a need to create a new program like this? Every day, a near-infinite amount of data are being generated by clinicians at the bedside, researchers at the bench, or new emerging health technologies such as wearable devices. But there's a need for individuals that are able to interpret this knowledge and draw conclusions from it. Our current research program offerings in the masters and PhD are focused on new discoveries, but the practical applications of these are often overlooked. Many of students do not seek careers in lab sciences, but wish to obtain a skill set that would give them opportunities in these many expanding areas that both directly and indirectly affect healthcare delivery, management, and scientific exploration. So that was the idea in terms of the program rationale of this program, to really address the need for graduates who will be interested in the implementation of newly discovered physiological knowledge relevant to human health and put it into practice. And what I want to emphasize is that this is a physiology program at its core. We expect our applicants to have a strong basis in human physiology, because we're not teaching core physiology in this program. We are jumping right into applications and very advanced courses in physiology. And you'll see here in this image, we have this intersect of data and healthcare all related. And so this is what this program is about. We are going to draw upon some major themes in terms of big data analysis in health, healthcare interventions, commercialization of physiology, as well as project management of large multi-investigator research teams, for example. We envision our students going into a number of different streams depending on their interests. For example, as I mentioned briefly, a lot of us have wearable devices. In the emerging health technology fields right now, a lot of clinicians are seeing patients with wearable devices, and they need people on their team that have the ability to not only understand what those ECGs, for example, mean in terms of the cardiovascular physiology behind it, but they also need people that can analyze big data sets, but have informed conversations with the healthcare practitioners as to how that may impact patient care. Our graduates are able to fill that gap. So our program is one year in structure. It is three terms. And in the first term, fall and winter term, we touch upon a number of themes through our courses. The first is a broad overview course in terms of seminars and graduate professional development, where we have collaborations with the MedVentions Program and other areas around the GTA that are pushing new technologies in health and also really talking about that intersect of commercialization data and how health is moving forward. Students will be also prepared with a faculty member to do a mentored literature review, resulting in a paper of publishable quality in terms of a review. Students also take a course in big data and health. So they are introduced to some of, to R and coding and some of the themes around what is most relevant in their interest moving forward. Clinical physiology. So the Department of Physiology at U of T has a lot of faculty members that are clinicians. And so the clinicians are going to come into the class and give broad case studies and discuss how new research themes are impacting their practice. We also have a course in commercialization and collaboration in physiology. This is taught by our faculty members that have successful commercial ventures, as well as collaborations with the Rotman School of Management here at U of T. And then depending on what students are interested in, in terms of cardiovascular physiology or neuroscience, they also take electives in advanced physiology graduate courses in our department. And all of that culminates in the summer term with a four-month practicum. Depending on what the students' interests are, this can be in hospital settings. It can be in startup companies, larger companies, large multi-investigator research teams to really carve out their own career path. So the deadlines for our program are coming up. The first one is in January. I do strongly encourage you, if you're truly interested in this program, to submit an application by January, because after January fifteenth, we will be offering rolling admissions. However, we will be still considering some applications if they come up until that second round deadline of May third. There is an email address listed on this slide where you can sign up for email updates about our program or ask us any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. If Dr. Cindy Willent can, from Applied Clinical Pharmacology, share your screen.
Go. All right, thank you. Just get this chat note of the way. And start here. So it's my pleasure to tell you about the Applied Clinical Pharmacology Course-Based Master's Program. This is a two-year program, although we do offer an advanced standing option for students who have an undergraduate degree in pharmacology and who are not interested in taking our experiential learning practicum. Basically, what we're doing in A C P is trying to create an interactive learning environment that enables students to get an advanced understanding of clinical pharmacology and to develop their skill set. Many of the students who apply to our program are interested in working in the pharmaceutical industry or in contract research organizations, hospital clinical trial sites, government, either at the federal or provincial levels, or in medical writing or consulting firms. And so we provide a wide variety of courses that enable students to develop their understanding of how drugs are discovered, how they work, how our body handles the drugs, and the drug development process with a particular focus in on clinical trial design and some of the ethical and economic considerations that go into that. We also have an emphasis on the regulatory guidelines around getting drugs to market. And what we're doing in this program is really trying to develop professional skills that best prepare our learners for their chosen career path. We do keep our program relatively small because we want to tailor the program to individual student interests. So we work with you to figure out where you would like to consider going for your future career. And then we tailor the program with respect to a practicum opportunity, research projects, and elective courses that best support that learning. So we do offer an independent research project where you work with a faculty member at the University of Toronto in a clinical setting. It could be at the University of Toronto on our St. George campus, working, for example, in the Medical Sciences Building. But often, it's in one of the affiliated hospitals or the Center for Addiction and Mental Health. So you could be placed around the city depending on your own personal research interests. As I mentioned, we have a practicum opportunity. And in the second year of the program, students go out often for about eight months to apply the skills they've developed in critical thinking and data analysis and problem solving. We emphasize effective communication. And in fact, the way that students are evaluated in our program is through a number of oral presentations, both individually as well as in teams, and a number of written documents that you prepare. For example, clinical trial applications, research ethic board, ethics board applications, and informed consent forms, investigator brochures, the types of documents that are actually used in the workplace. And we really foster networking. So we find that many of the applicants to our program know they want to, for example, work in a pharmaceutical company, but they don't really know the specific roles that they would take on in that company, what's available to them. So we bring in a lot of people to talk about what they do on a day-to-day basis and to really, you know, allow students to explore different career opportunities. Some of them are related to clinical research and, for example, coordinating a clinical trial or designing clinical trials. Some people are interested in pharmacoeconomics and working at either the government end or in consulting firms or in pharmaceutical companies. There's a wide variety of social, of opportunities that we have to learn about different positions. And I just want to emphasize to you that grad school is actually a lot of fun. So in addition to the learning that you do and the hard work that you do, it's, it's really an experience unlike anything else in, you know, that you go through. So we find, I think, all of us here have really fond memories of graduate school, and it's a time to really expand your social and professional network and develop what we call transferable skills. So I've listed some of the places that our students have gone. I can't fit everything on the screen, obviously. But we're really proud that our graduates, and we've now graduated, I think, about six cohorts of students, are able to transition from their practicum into full-time employment. So we put our practicum at the very end of our program, which enables those employers, if they're interested, to hire you on, on a full-time basis. And so we have a number of people working in the pharmaceutical industry, in government, in consulting, in medical writing, and a wide variety of places that you can see here. And we actually invite our alumni to come back and talk to the current students about the opportunities that are available to them and about their career experiences. If you're interested in our program, you do need to have a BSc degree with a minimum of a B plus in your final year of study. We do look at your entire transcript, and we take into account, you know, the other activities that you're involved in, such as extracurricular activities, volunteer positions, et cetera. So we do look at your curriculum vitae or your resume and really try to get to know you through your cover, your statement as well, your personal statement. We do ask if you're considering our program that you think about taking. We do ask if you're considering our program that you think about taking physiology courses, at least one physiology course to have an understanding, since pharmacology is such an applied science. So in addition to your transcript, you are expected to provide three letters of reference, which again, we prefer academic letters of reference. And as I've said, your personal statement is an opportunity for you to tell us a little bit more about yourself and why you want to apply to our program. And our deadlines are posted here a little bit earlier for international students. But for domestic students, our deadline is April 30th. And there's a website listed here if you have any further questions.
Thank you Cindy. If Sarah McMahan from Physical Therapy can share your screen?
Hey, thank you Natasha. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. My name is Sarah. I work in physical therapy. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our Master of Science in Physical Therapy Program, which is one of the professional programs that was mentioned earlier. And this is one that doesn't use the SGS application system. Thanks Rory for mentioning that. So we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like as well. But I'll tell you a bit about the program in general first, and then we'll look at the admission criteria. So what is physical therapy? Physical therapy is a self-regulated professional health discipline. And what that means is that physical therapists are able to engage in certain controlled acts, like diagnosis, suctioning, and so forth. They're also, this is also an accredited program, which means that if you want to practice as a PT, you have to have a license and you have to pass your licensing exam. So what do PTs actually do? When people think of physical therapy, the first thing that often comes to mind is, like if you have a knee injury or a sports injury and you need to go in and learn some exercises to help strengthen the muscles and get back to your normal functioning. That is an example of what PTs do. And that's considered musculoskeletal physical therapy. But they also work in other fields, cardiorespiratory. They also work in neurological fields. And then sports areas, private practice clinics, hospitals. There's lots of different areas that PTs work in, even academia, research, and health promotion. So you've got lots of options if you do decide to go into physical therapy. And you can always specialize after you get your PT degree, which is kind of like, it's kind of like a general, kind of like the undergrad med degree and that you kind of get a little bit of training in a whole bunch of different areas so that you can practice as a general physiotherapist. But then you can specialize later on if you wanted to do something in addition to that. So PTs, essentially, they work on trying to prevent, diagnose, and treat dysfunctional movement and get people back to their normal level of functioning. So I mentioned here before, PTs work in a variety of different fields across the entire public and private sector, across the entire lifespan. So everything from neonatal right up to end-of-life care. They work with rehabilitation, long-term chronic care, acute care, private practice, and public, like hospitals, for example. And I mentioned here as well, they do look at more than just the musculoskeletal, although that is absolutely one of the things that PTs do. We also have other fields in PT like neurological, cardiorespiratory, and so forth. And then there's things like health promotion, academia. So why would you want to study PT at U of T specifically? So for one, we have a renewed curriculum that our department is super excited about. This is our, it's in the works now. We've got it going with our first group of students. And I'll show you what it looks like. Just bear with me here. I'm going to flip over to the other screen. So it looks a little bit like this. So we start off here with some critical stuff, critical foundations. Then you get to take a look at some MSK stuff, which is that musculoskeletal stuff that everybody thinks about when they first think of PT. Then we go into a cardiorespiratory unit. There's a neuro unit. And then you have an internship. And this is the really fun part. This is where you actually get to go into the clinic under the supervision of a practicing PT and do stuff with patients. You get to actually practice the skills you've learned and apply them to patient settings. These advanced critical thinking units are kind of like integrative units, where you kind of combine knowledge from across all the different areas of practice. Then we have some additional, this one is scholarly practice. This is where you sort of start to get your research project underway and you start thinking about the topics that you want to study. Then we have a couple more clinical internships. Again, some more advanced work with neuromusculoskeletal selectors is where you get to pick what you want to look at. And then there's, we finish off with your research and a couple more clinical internships. So that's what the program looks like. I'm just going to show you really quickly what you'd need to do if you wanted to get into the program. So we look at your academics and we also look at reference letters and something called the Computer Administered Profile, or CAP, and something called CASPER. So there's lots of information about this on our website. So I'm not going to go into too much detail. But basically, we do look for high academic standing. You need to have a degree in liberal arts or science. So that's lots of different programs qualify for that. Our GPA cutoff is quite competitive. The last couple of years, it's been around a 3.81. We do have a handful of prerequisite courses that we ask everybody to make sure they've done. Physiology, anatomy, stats, and then a couple in life science research, social science, humanities, languages. We have info on that on our website. We look at the last, approximately the last two years of your study. So that's what we're going to calculate our undergrad degree based on. So it's not your entire four-year degree. It's going to be just the last two years. We use this thing called ORPAS undergraduate conversion table. Basically, it's essentially a way to take all of the different universities and put them onto a similar grading scale. There's lots of info on this online, too. So I just, I won't go into too much detail there. CASPER is an online situational judgment test. This is something that a lot of PT programs have started to implement in their admissions process. I don't want to spend too long on this. This is essentially just a video that you'll watch and then they'll ask you some questions. You answer the questions and then you get a score based on that. Reference letters, again, as it's been mentioned before, you want to make sure you have reference letters, one academic, one professional, and choose somebody who knows you really well. I think Rory mentioned this as well. You want to choose somebody who can actually, who actually knows you and can really speak to your characteristics and strengths. CAP is essentially an interview, similar to an interview that we do. It'll be online. And it's a set of questions that you would answer and submit to us. And not everybody's invited for this. It's just the top 350. So if you've submitted an application, you want to go to olac.on.ca/orpas. Our January deadline is coming up. So it's typically the first week of January. And I'm going to leave it, I think, at that. If you have any further information, you're welcome to give us a call or send us an email. We're happy to talk to you a little bit more about that. We have an info session coming up in October as well. You can find out more details on our website. Yeah, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you Sarah. If Aleem Lalani from Occupational Science Occupational Theory Therapy share your screen?
All right, there we go. Welcome, everybody. So I'm here to speak to you about the Master of Science in Occupational Therapy Program. So it's a graduate program. It's similar to physical therapy in that it's two years of full-time study. It's a professional master's degree program, meaning that you are job-ready when you finish the program. It's offered at the St. George campus and at the Mississauga campus. So we have 90 students for incoming classes, St. George, and 40 at Mississauga. Program is, of course, accredited and our regulatory association is called the College of Occupational Therapists of Ontario. So doctors have something similar, nurses have something similar, and we have something similar. So what is this? Occupational therapists, they keep people engaged. So the word occupation, it refers to act of doing or engaging. So what engages you? Is it your schoolwork? Is it your activity? Is it play? Is it playing the piano? It could be anything. So as OT, their goal is to promote health, prevent disability, and enable clients to do something that's meaningful to them. So they, of course, work with people of all ages. And if you think about it from that engineering point of view, so occupational science is related to occupational therapy. So occupational therapy comes out of occupational science. Similar how engineering science, you get these subgroups of engineering that come out of there. So obviously, the profession is very diverse, challenging, and rewarding. We have people working in settings with older adults, with mental health. And these are actual OT pictures, by the way. They're not just stock photos. So we do have people in the field who are willing to engage with the community. So here are some of the jobs that are possible. So some work in school boards, head up disability management programs at big corporations or in insurance companies. They help people who have mental illness return to work or school. They may work in, for legal teams, helping with medical legal cases, enable individuals with brain injuries return to work. So if you think about that, if you're in a car accident and you have a brain injury, it's difficult to just get back to your everyday occupation, let alone your job, but just your everyday things like taking something out of a cabinet or making your own food. And so of course, on that note, for issues including dementia and Alzheimer's, they will enable older adults to age in place, in other words, remain in their home. And so they will work with governments to advocate for accessibility. So lots of OT in the news. Now hopefully you'll notice that I brought this up. The profession has been around for 100 years. And since 2016, it seems to constantly pop up on these top jobs lists. This past year, our graduating class, I've never seen a stronger job market in 10 years. It's incredible and OTs are needed everywhere and the jobs are full-time. So why study OT at U of T? Our faculty, some of whom have wrote the textbook, which is very interesting to see. We have teaching methods in our state-of-the-art facilities. We participate in interprofessional education with the rest of the faculty of medicine. And we have over 75 placement sites within our catchment area. So the program starts off, you take 24 courses. You start off with a foundational year. That's year one, specifically your first term. And then it sort of gets more applied as you get further into the program. Then field work begins. And field work is the fun part. That's where you actually get to go to a site, virtual or in-person. And your placements will be rotated throughout different settings. You might work in a children's hospital in one setting and then work in a mental health facility in another. And then the third placement, you might end up in people's homes doing community OT. So just some examples of our research as well, because it's not all just clinical work. We are heavily engaged in research in varying areas. One of the areas here is number five, aging at home with AI-assisted technologies. This is a massive area of growth. We have one of the premier professors in this area, Rosalie Wang and Alex Mihalidis. They are the premier researchers that work with us. So we've had OTs go and work with software companies, for example, so building assistive technologies for the home. Right now, with our Mississauga campus, we employ bidirectional learning, which is in that electric can be broadcast from one campus to the other. It's not necessarily all at St. George Broadcast in Mississauga and it's not the other way around either completely. We also employ a co-instructor model where you'll have a simultaneous lecture with the co-instructor at each site in person. And right now with COVID, we are doing remote lectures and in-person labs. For our field work program, this is the fun part. This is what people love the most about this program is you get 1,000 hours of field work. The idea is that you are practice-ready by the time you finish the program. So the field replacement increases in difficulty as you move through field work one to field work four. Our field replacement sites can be as far west as Mississauga Brampton, as far east as Whitby, sometimes Oshawa actually, too, and all the way into North York region. If you do not have access to transportation, we will make sure that you have a placement site that is public transit accessible. And again, it will be diverse. Your placement sites will be diverse throughout the program. We also have a thing called LEAP placements. And so these are placements where we, it's Leadership Emerging Advocacy Planning. That's what it stands for. And they're effectively placements in areas that we have normally not practiced before. So these are international and some are local. So as an example, we have students working at the Toronto FC Football Club on their field work. And we have others in the country of Tanzania and East Africa doing emerging leadership planning there. Our mentorship program, this is a course in the program that you take for all six terms you're in the program. So the idea is that you have access to a clinician throughout the program to provide you with professional development, again, so that you're practice and job-ready by the time you finish this program. Interprofessional education, I mentioned before. We work with the Faculty of Medicine on this. You're going to work with other healthcare professionals. And there'll be workshops and seminars, and we'll get into that once you get into the program. But the idea is that you're familiar with other healthcare professionals and so you become your own professional network with them. Amazing student life in the program. It's very diverse. You'll notice that it's not just athletics. There are activities that have to do with arts, with science, with culture, and with sports. Your financial needs, you'll need around $13,000 for tuition and fees each year. There are, the placements aren't paid. But again, the idea is that you rotate between the placements and we'll provide you with some travel funding if you need it. We also have scholarships and bursaries available. Thanks to the Graduate Life Science Education Office, we have a Faculty of Medicine Professional Master's Bursary. To get into the program, similar to physical therapy, you need an appropriate bachelor's degree, which generally means you need a four-year degree in the liberal arts or the sciences. We do not have any prerequisite courses required. But it might help you to have some background in stats, research design, physiology, and psychology. Just makes things a little easier when you're in the program. The non-academic assessment, we're looking for a personal statement submission. So you'll see two questions within the application form itself. And they usually center on why you want to be an OT. We want to see a resume and we also want to see two reference letters, again, on standardized forms called confidential assessment forms. And the idea is that the person who writes you those references can honestly comment on whether you can succeed in a graduate degree program. Your campus assignment, you'll be assigned either Mississauga or St. George campus. All students who apply are considered for both campuses and we send out a campus preference survey around March. And that will ask you what campus you prefer, but they're not guaranteed. But we do try and accommodate your preference. Offers of admission for this year are going out on May 14th. We're going to send you an email and that email will have your offer conditions in addition to your campus assignment. So the successful applicant profile, probably what you're only wondering, how to get into this program? When we say sub-GPA, similar to physical therapy, that means your last 10 full course equivalents, approximately your last two years, looking for about an A- to an A average at least. So we typically find that applicants are in the top 10% of their academic class when they graduate. And your resume and your references should point out that you've made an informed career choice, that you want OT. Remember, OT is not medicine. OT is not physical therapy. OT is not speech pathology. These are all very distinct professions. And so the idea is that you've come across on your application that you've made an informed career choice. So how to apply? We use the Ontario University's Application Center. They have a system called ORPAS, O-R-P-A-S, this very long name. And you can apply to multiple rehabilitation programs at different universities like McMaster and Western using the same application form. So it's very convenient for you. The application deadline is still subject to change. It's tentatively set as January 8th, so check their website. Everything goes to the ORPAS institution. It doesn't come to U of T, it goes right to ORPAS. Then we pull the data from them. And there is my contact information. So there is a human behind that email address, ot.studentservices. And just email us any questions that you can't find on our website and we'll be happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you Aleem. If Adriana Dragomir from Speech Language Pathology can share your screen?
Sure, thank you. I hope you can see my full screen.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to, first of all, thank you Natasha for the opportunity for organizing this. This is a very exciting time always to be able to present our program to undergraduate students at U of T. And, you know, under the current circumstances, we're very grateful for any opportunity that allows us to interact with undergraduate students. My name is Adriana Dragomir. I am the Student Affairs Administrator in the Department of Speech Language Pathology. I want to thank you all for being here today. I will be giving you a brief introduction to the Professional Masters in Speech Language Pathology at U of T. At the end of this presentation, of course, you're welcome to ask questions. And as we're trying to move over the past, or faster to say towards the end of this program today, I encourage you to write directly to me if you have any questions at sop.studentaffairs@utonto.edu. So in just a few words about our program. Our program was established in 1958, so it's, this is a seasoned program. A master's degree was established in 1980. And ours, we also have a master's of science and a PhD in speech and pathology. They live under the Rehabilitation Sciences Institute. So what are speech and pathology? They are professionals who have expertise in development and resource communication and swallowing. Those of you who've had speech impairment as children will know what a speech language pathologist does. They help you communicate yourself better. Of course, they work as clinicians, they teach, they lead, they manage their own clinics, they lead programs, they carry out research and they are self-employed often and they work everywhere there's a need. You would work in hospitals, of course, in rehabilitation departments or programs. You'd work in schools as well, in rehabilitation centers. And many of our graduates on their own private practices, which gives them a lot of flexibility. It's very exciting. And they also of course work with other rehabilitation professionals and teach. And sometimes they teach at university or university level or produce research in research facilities. Our program is almost two years long, 22 months. There are no breaks. There are nine units in total, five academic units and four clinical units, which consists of placements, obviously. What's very interesting about our program, and it's actually a very unique feature of our program, is that each academic unit is followed by a clinical placement in the same area. The academic units actually are grouped in sort of by theme. So when you take, when you're enrolled in one, in courses in one particular academic unit, all the courses in that unit are going to be somehow related. So you gain solid knowledge of a certain area, a solid foundation that will enable you to perform well in the placement that will follow immediately. At the end of the program, you will have to demonstrate competence in the department of regular objectives. You have to put together a capstone portfolio, which is really a reflection piece that will help us understand that you not just learned, but reflected upon your knowledge or your learning and are ready to move forward into practice. Some of the features of the program are listed here, integrated learning experiences so you get to work with, to understand how your profession functions within the larger context of rehabilitation sciences. I've already mentioned integrated academic and clinical modules. There are teaching clinics and clinical placements and our faculty carry out research. And they also teach you. So you work with clinicians and researchers at the same time, all the time. And so that at the end of the program, you're really prepared, you know all the research in the field and you're prepared to move into practice. I already mentioned our faculty carrying out research. It's very exciting. We have labs, feel free to check out our website to understand more about the kind of research that's being done. And our department has very, very close relationships with the SOP community. You, if you apply and are accepted into our program, you will be surprised to see how really, you know, close this community is and how friendly everyone is. And it's, it's usually a fantastic experience for those who are in our major program. We also have a very supportive alumni association, very supportive. They're very close to us in everything that that we do. They're very involved. And so you always know, you don't just know, you're just your colleagues from your cohort, but you will also be in touch with people who graduated. And you'll be able to share in their experiences as well. I already mentioned that this is a 22-month-long program. We only have one intake in September. The application deadline is January 8th, if it is for other rehabilitation programs. You have to apply through ORPASS. We accept at this point 60 students. So what do you have to have for your undergraduate degree equivalent? Rory has already mentioned the minimum need be standing in the final year. This is an SGS requirement. We abide by it. And we also have prerequisite courses that must be completed with at least a B plus in each course. It's ideally you have these courses completed at the time of the application. If some of these courses are in progress, that's fine. Make sure there are not too many, write to me if you have any concerns around this. The prerequisite areas are child development, phonetics, general linguistics, statistics, research methods and human physiology. We also ask for two academic reference letters, as my colleagues have said before. Do you start contacting your referees? It's, it's a very busy season for your referees. And it's important to start contacting them now because by early January, you will be breaking out basically. Where's my letter? And you don't want that kind of stress on you. We also ask for a letter of intent. The clinical volunteer experience has been waived for this admission cycle only because of different circumstances. It's been particularly difficult for applicants to obtain clinical experience. So this is waived. Of course, if you do have some experience, you can discuss it in your letter of intent. We do take everything into consideration. It's part of their, you know, life experience. And so if you do have it, put it in the letter of intent. We, because this program is obviously something that you will have to support financially. We encourage applicants to apply to, for words, Ontario Graduate Scholarship is one of these. It's a very good scholarship to have if you have the marks. It's about $15,000 per year. And we encourage everybody who applies to our program to apply for an OGS. The application is done through the website of the School of Graduate Studies. And it's pretty straightforward. This will cover at least your tuition and your clinical costs. Our department on website, www.soputahoto.ca. Don't hesitate to contact me, s o p dot student affairs at utah to dot c. I'm very responsive and I'm excited to get your questions. And thank you, everybody, for being here today, for listening to my presentation.
Thank you, Adriana. If Dr. Joseph Farimut can share your screen from Translational Research Program?
I will try. And I hope it works. Hi, everyone. I feel like saying something like, and now for something a little different. But we are all trying to do sort of many of the same things. I think I want to echo very much Rory's original statement saying, "One of the most important things is for you to find something that you are passionate about and that is a good fit for you." The Translational Research Program is a platform for learning. Our entire goal is to get you to start thinking about thinking differently, being a creative problem solver. The reality of the world right now, I think, is that rapid innovation, being able to solve problems in new, different and interesting ways, having those innovation skills is incredibly important and more so now than it was four or five years ago. And so that our students are inspired to think differently so that they can champion health innovation. That is the mission of this program. We do not actually prepare you for a specific profession. We help you learn to be a professional, to advance yourself in the career of your choice, in the directions of your choice. So you can innovate, you can reinvent yourself. Translation is something that people still don't have a good grasp on because it's, it's sort of something we talk about, but we don't really define well. So essentially, think of it as turning stuff from research, from labs, into innovations, applications that are actually used by patients or people or communities. It's learning the best practices to, to make that transition from the idea or concept into a product or service or application. And what we've realized increasingly is being innovative in these ways in health science to translate, to commercialize, requires very specific skills. But they're also generalizable skills. And that's why the TRP exists. And if you are the type of person who is curious, interested, wants to apply, wants to engage and make and see the impact of your labor, then this is the program you should consider. We help you learn to navigate complexity, to become a better problem solver. And you do this by actually doing these things. Like many of the other programs where you have internships, what we have is a capstone. But you develop your own project fueled by your own interests and your own passion so that you can then go out and see if you can make it happen. And that's what you spend your second year. We do what's called sort of facilitated learning in the sense that it's about discussion and it's about the kinds of things that you want to know. It's not a memorization approach. It's about how do we think about and solve and adjust to different circumstances. So the picture in the background is where we used to be. Increasingly now, we're in the corner where we're doing, we're doing very much the same thing online. And it's been a really interesting time in the sense that we've been managed to transition. And our students are spending six hours in a row on Zoom with us. And they're then choosing to spend extra time after class is done talking. And we were very worried that we wouldn't be able to capture some of that engagement online that we had in the classrooms, but it's been phenomenal. We focus on core competencies that include critical thinking, effective communication, risk management. You work on these skills through your capstone and we help you, we facilitate, we give you advice, we work with you. And then you work with other experts in the field. You can go to any field, you can explore, you can use our program as a platform to learn the things that you're passionate about and develop areas. We've had students come from a wide range of backgrounds and roles and educational experiences. We've had people that have come from sciences in bench and have decided that they want to be designers or they want to be entrepreneurs. We have had clinicians coming in saying, "I want to code," and then becoming sort of pseudo-experts on virtual reality environments for health. So really, the limit is your imagination and where you can take it. And we help facilitate through the two-year program where you want to go. You learn about how to be persuasive in your communication. You learn about sort of practices and methods. You then build up to a capstone project. And the capstone projects are quite varied because they're very individual. So we have, for example, had things like someone looked into timely access to mental health for prenatal services. We've had people look into and have done pilots, surgical studies on kids with incontinence. We've had people do 3D modeling for surgery. We've had pediatric trauma defense quite recently with sick kids. We've had students do long-distance projects, international projects. So it's really about finding an area where you can identify a strong need and then thinking about how can you innovate in that space. And those kinds of skills are incredibly important for the future. The ability to collaborate, the ability to sort of envision where you're going to go and to manage the complexities between here and there. The outcomes have been phenomenal with our students. We have had people going to various industries, into research, into policy, further education. We've had into small startups. It really is about figuring out what do you want to do? Where are your passions? And then how do you make that happen? And that's what we help you do. We are a platform for learning and facilitating where you want to go. I agree entirely with many of the things that people have said in the background and before me, that I am probably not the best person to find out more about our program or where to go. However, should you want to, you can book a consultation with either myself or other faculty using our website, trp dot utah to dot c. We have an upcoming information session where we can give you more of the details on, on the requirements and the program itself. But really, honestly, the absolute best way to find out if this is right for you and if this is something that would excite you and make you really interested in your work is to talk to another student. We have students that range from 20 to 60-ish and that come from all walks of life and all different backgrounds. If you reach out to us, we will put you in touch with a student ambassador and they will tell you about their experience, answer any questions and find out if there's a good fit here for you with this program. So with that, I can just open myself up to questions.
So we'll hope it afterwards, but we have two more presenters left. So if Stacy Houston can share your screen from genetic counseling?
Okay, thank you. Perfect. Thanks for this opportunity. I am a relatively new director of the MSC in Genetic Counseling Program at U of T. However, the program is not new, it's over 20 years old. And we are a two-year professional program that graduates genetic counselors who can work in various fields. So genetic counselors have specialized training both in medical genetics and counseling that help individuals make decisions about their health. So this can include interpreting genetic information, explaining how diseases are inherited in families, which genetic tests may or may not be right for individuals, and facilitating informed decision-making. Genetic counselors work in a variety of clinical settings, including pediatrics, prenatal diagnosis and oncology. And many counselors also work in molecular laboratories or in research or private industries. Our program is a full-time degree program that prepares students both with academic knowledge and clinical skills so that upon graduation, they can work as highly competent counselors in a variety of clinical practice settings. So for our year one courses, this is a list of our courses. The courses are developed and taught by genetic counselors and tailored specifically to support the development of the foundational knowledge required for clinical competencies. Right away in the first semester, students get opportunities to observe common genetic conditions in these observational clinics as shown here. This year, we pivoted our observational clinics to a practice-based learning model, given our restrictions with COVID. But however, you can see there's a wide variety of conditions. Students get it. students get exposed to right away. We partner with many different clinical sites in the downtown core and in Toronto itself. Many of them, as mentioned before, are very centralized downtown, close to U of T and close to transit. In semester two of year one, individuals immediately begin clinical hands-on training in a variety of clinical settings supervised by accredited and trained genetic counselors, giving them exposure to various clinical situations and various different genetic conditions, both in children and adults. Year two courses build on those from the first year and also include various guest speakers from leaders in the U of T community. Courses include discussions of ethical and professional issues that are important in clinical practice. And as this is a non-thesis master's program, students develop and complete an independent research project of their choice. Second year rotations include increasing clinical responsibility to develop counseling competencies under supervision. And students also have the opportunity for a four-week elective in a variety of fields, including both clinical and non-clinical options. Other activities include regular journal club case review and a six-week summer placement where we encourage students to do a placement outside of the U of T core in order to get different learning opportunities and other networking options. Our application deadline is coming up in December. We use a holistic approach where we're looking at responses to questions, description of relative experience, relevant experience and references, plus the transcripts. Here's a slide of our fees. Some of our highlights is we don't have a GRE component. We do have bursaries available for new and returning students. And we feel like we provide a very unique and diverse patient population experience. And our graduates have been hired into a variety of conditions, of positions, including clinical lab, health policy and research. If you'd like to learn more, we are having a genetic counselor, genetic counseling virtual information day on November 27th. You can either email our inquiry line or check our website for further details. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Stacy. Thanks. Thank you to everyone who's still on and thank you for your patience. So we have one more presenter, Mae Doyle Camaras from Biomedical Communications. If you can share your screen.
Thanks, Natasha. The need for individuals with scientific training and the skills necessary to design accurate and effective science media has never been more apparent than in this time of COVID-19. Hi, everyone, I'm Maeve Doyle, the graduate program administrator for the Master of Science in Biomedical Communications, or BMC for short. BMC is a two-year program offered through the Institute of Medical Science and the Faculty of Medicine at the University of Toronto and the Department of Biology at the University of Toronto, Mississauga. We are one of only four accredited programs in North America, the only program in Canada, and a two-campus program. Our administrative offices are housed primarily at UTM and we have facilities on the St. George campus. This year, we're celebrating the 75th anniversary of our program at U of T. Students in our program are engaged in the creation and evaluation of a range of visual tools, including medical illustration, media and user experience design, animation and virtual simulations. Our students benefit from small class sizes and individualized instruction from faculty whose expertise ranges from the scientific visualization of complex molecular and anatomical structures to the creation of visual narratives for outreach and patient education. In year one, students build a foundation in illustration and visualization tools and strategies, as well as take basic and clinical science courses such as cadaveric dissection, molecular visualization and neuroanatomy. In year two, students take a combination of both required and elective courses and work on their master's research project, a self-directed capstone project. Professional development occurs throughout the program through critiques, workshops and guest lectures, through formal training. In ethics and professionalism, students learn how to quote, write contracts, self-promote. They're informed on copyright, plagiarism and artists' rights. Students tour the leading biomedical visualization studios in the world, located here in the GTA, and many of which employ BMC alumni. They have the opportunity to attend the industry's annual professional conference. And at the end of year two, they participate in a graduate showcase for employers. So what do students do after they graduate? They can pursue further education. In 2017, BMC conferred its first PhD in biomedical visualization. Dr. Andrea Gautier is now a postdoctoral research fellow at the Knowledge Lab, University College London. They found their own studios such as Access Studio, Artery Studios, Bio Hughes Digital and Azure Vesta Design. They work at media and animation studios, at design consultancies that serve the health and pharmaceutical markets, at biotech startups, in hospital media departments and in academia. The number of professional medical illustrators is small but mighty and BMC grads benefit from a strong alumni network and from their own professional association. The biomedical communications program is looking for individuals who are fascinated by and conversant in science, who are visual thinkers and creators, who have diverse and interdisciplinary backgrounds, who are excited by the idea of combining visual representation, science and state-of-the-art technology. The minimum admission requirements for BMC include a four-year undergraduate degree with at least a mid-B standing in the final two years of undergraduate study, an English credit, humanities or social science credit, cell and molecular biology and histology credit, and an intro physiology, a portfolio of visual work, three academic letters of reference and a letter of intent. The BMC program receives approximately 100 applications each year for 15 to 18 positions. The average final two-year GPA for successful applicants in 2019 was 3.68. For students starting the program in 2020, domestic tuition fees are $11,950 and international fees are $40,610 per year for our two-year program. Applications are submitted through the SGS online admissions application and are being accepted now until December 14 for fall 2021 admission. And finally, for more information, please visit our website, download our brochure or contact me. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Maeve. So that is the end of our presentation. We can have the rest of the time. I did schedule it till 2:00 PM. I know we're behind schedule. If any students can post their questions in the chat or or they can actually share this, open up their camera and unmute themselves, they can also do that as well. And yeah, we'll take the next 20 minutes to answer questions if you'd like. Does anyone else, does any students have any questions? Or does any presenters have anything else to share with them, any new one?
I see that there's a question from Emily for Stacy. Emily's asking, what sort of volunteer experience is highly regarded for the genetic counseling program?
Stacy had to leave, but I will definitely pass it on to Stacy.
One of the common mistakes that we see in BMC when people are applying is around the letters of reference. They choose inappropriate referees. So I just wanted to share that the IMS is very strict. Letters of reference must be from university faculty who have either taught an applicant or supervised an applicant's undergraduate research. Joseph, if someone was preparing now their application for your program, what kind of suggestions would you give them?
Come and talk to us. And I think that's actually probably best for every program. If you are interested, engage. We know what we're looking for, but we also know a little bit about the kinds of students that do really well in our programs. So if you are interested, please spend the time to come and talk and get to know. That has a, it's, that's actually a double-edged device because I have undergrads that come and ask, well, I'm applying to 40 programs. I'm just going to do the shotgun approach and hope one of them will get in. But I think that is pretty tricky and really maybe not the best strategy. Pick the ones you're really interested in, come see them, come ask them questions and then tailor your applications to those programs.
Would anyone have any insight to give on how COVID-19 maybe impacted students or coursework or research in your program? I know that our director, Dr. Jenkinson, really had to pivot and she did it in a weekend. And you know, it, but our program is very technologically informed.
I know for us, our labs have been able to continue to function with distancing in place and students have been coming in in shifts to maintain the proper distancing. For the students in the program, there's no issue in terms of time to completion. We'll make any of the necessary adjustments needed to make sure that the students finish on time and still get the same education that they would have gotten. Students entering this year, starting in September by, by, by 2022, we're hoping to be past this. So I don't think there'd be an issue for students coming in. I don't think there's going to be any long-lasting effects, at least on our program, on completing this master's.
I just wanted to respond to something that Joseph said about, you know, coming to visit us. And obviously, that's not really feasible right now. That said, we're all here because we want to see great graduate students and we want to see them succeed. So we all do encourage you to connect with us and visit in some form in order that we can guide your progress through your undergrad. You don't need to wait till you're in fourth year. You can come see us in your first year. We've had high school students come to see us and ask about the program. So that's something I think we'd all encourage is adequate preparation. And that's best done, I think, when you're in touch with the program throughout your studies.
Anything else to share?
I would make the comment in terms of the COVID-19. For our program, for the PA and the CE's, because it's something that's not well-known and well-appreciated by undergraduate students, we found that the students who applied and really had a good dossier were ones who had a lot of, took the initiative to find out as much as they could about the program. And a lot of the hospitals, certainly on the PA side, you can make connections to actually visit surgical pathology and just get sort of a shadowing experience. But with COVID-19 now, that option is not available. And I'm sure for the CE students, it would be the same thing in terms of going into a CE facility. So I think it's still important students have as much information onboard about what this career involves. So if they can't visit, at least they should try to set up interviews with folks who are practicing. Certainly, I know the PAs and also the CE's are pretty open to interacting with potential students. So students should really make the effort to do that because if they come to apply and the referees get the sense that the student doesn't really understand what they're applying for, this does not augur well for the application. So the more information, the better. And as Rory said at the beginning, to make sure that you understand what, what career you're, you're getting into. And then it's really a very enjoyable experience.
A very unique aspect to applying to our program is, is that we require a portfolio of art. And I wondered, Dr. Jenkinson, if you could, if you had any advice on how best to prepare a portfolio of art?
We look at really a broad range of, of visual media from students. It can be anything from sketches in your lab, in your lab notes, to formal studies. So we encourage students before they apply to come and visit us and have a review of the work they have done so that we can advise them. And, and we also encourage students to carry sketchbooks, to observe the world around them, go to museums and sketch, take life drawing courses, and even free courses that they can find available on YouTube in order to get practice because really, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, is practicing your, your skills.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, well, if there's not, no more other questions, I'm just going to stop the recording and the, the recording will be sent to all the students that registered for the session. And I'll send also the email contacts of all the presenters as well. Anyway, thanks. Thank you so much to all the presenters and all the students who attended. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Natasha.